Good evening and welcome to the Thousand Oaks City Council Meeting for December 15th. This is a different face. We have a new mayor. Al Adam is now replacing me in one of the boxes on YouTube and on Zoom. We switched seats. I'm Claudia Bilalapena and I invite you to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and I will now ask our city clerk for the roll call.
Councilmember Adam.
Yes, I'm here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember McNamie.
Here.
Mayor Protem Engler.
Here.
Mayor Bilalapena.
Present. All right, we do have a request to move one item up a little bit earlier, and that is item 10A. We will hear that pretty soon. So with that, I will turn it over to our city manager for a COVID-19 update, a grim one.
Hello, thank you, Mayor Bilalapena. City council and the public has become customary over the last nine months. Just going to provide you with a very brief update on where things stand as it relates to COVID-19. Just received the latest numbers from the county. I'm sure folks that are tracking this closely recognized that yesterday was a record high for a variety of numbers. 2,600 cases yesterday. Today, we're adding an additional 487 cases to that. Two additional deaths, taking death toll just over 200 to 201. Our sort of biggest concern point when talking to county officials, in addition to the sheer volume of community spread, is the hospitalizations and the ICU capacity. So current hospitalizations continue the trend of records during the pandemic. We're now up to 225 hospitalized and 56 in the intensive care unit at our various hospitals across the county. So that hospital capacity is a concern paired with the seasonal flu and the other volume that we see during this time of year is creating quite a strain on all of our hospitals, and that includes the Los Rubles Hospital here in Thousand Oaks. And just taking a moment to ask everyone, recognize this is a very difficult period as we come into the holidays. There is a tremendous amount of community spread happening. I know there is also a tremendous strain on our businesses and our business community, and we all feel that firsthand, and just want to ask for everyone's cooperation and support as we move through these difficult weeks ahead. Get out there and support those local businesses by purchasing gift cards. Get some takeaway food where you can. Try to support your neighbors in a distance manner and show holiday spirit in that different way this year. There is hope on the horizon. First vaccines arrive today for frontline healthcare workers. They will begin the inoculation of some of those workers tomorrow. With additional approvals coming from the FDA later this week, we anticipate the volume of vaccination will increase steadily in the weeks and months ahead. And so there is light at the end of the tunnel here, and that concludes my update for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. I do want to just stress, it is important, personal responsibility is important. If you feel the need to protest the lockdown, then please do so with a mask on your face and by physically distancing from those around you. With that, we will go to the consent calendar because we don't have any public comments, per se, and for consent calendar, we would like to pull probably item 7K.
Madam Mayor, I'd like you to select to pull 7A due to a conflict that we can talk about the rest of the consent calendar, and we'll come back to that one later. I appreciate that.
Yes, Councilmember McNamie, that would be 7K. K for Kevin. Thank you. And Councilmember Jones.
Yes, I'd like a little earlier enlightenment on items F and L, please.
All right, so we are pulling items F, K, and L from the consent calendar. Anything else that we need to pull before I ask for a motion for the remainder of the calendar?
I'll show move.
Thank you. Please vote.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie.
Yes.
Council-- Mayor Protem Engler.
Can you unmute yourself, Mr. Engler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor Bilalapena.
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. With that, we will go to item 7F, and that is Mr. Jones.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I just would like a little further enlightenment, as I said, on this idea of retaining a lobbyist. And do we base the fee that we're paying on the services that have been rendered, or is this more like an insurance policy for future problems we may have with the state legislature?
So our Legislative Affairs Manager, Mina Leba, is online, and I'll let her respond to more of the specifics as it relates to the contract structure. But this contract, take it up on annual basis, is our linkage to Sacramento. We have a separate contract that is our linkage to Washington, DC. I think the council knows well the ongoing issues and challenges and opportunities we have with Sacramento, and having that connectivity and linkage is very, very important as we track every year a significant number of new bills that comes forward. And I think one of the things that Mina will share is that we never know what those new bills are going to look like. And so the structure of the contract has to be flexible in the extent that we are able to respond as things come up. So, Mina, would you like to take it from there?
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Happy Holidays, Council. Member Jones, I just wanted to answer the first part of your question. Actually, this amount we have had is fairly, fairly minimum compared to other contractors that are working with them. We have had them for such a long time. We have created a relationship with them that they have not actually given us any fee hikes. So as of over 20 years ago, we have maintained the same rate, which is $2,750 a month. For a lobbyist, that is pretty tame. And I will say, you're absolutely right. It is partially an insurance contract. It's also, as what our city manager had said, they are connection to Sacramento, particularly the governor, as well as our senate, as well as our assembly members. I try to fly up to Sacramento best I can, at least four times a year, to present some of our interest and issues. But oftentimes, there are issues that are very last minute that take place, and we need somebody on the fly that can run to the governor's office, make pleas on the city's behalf, as well as fight off very deleterious legislation that has been coming down, taking advantage of our local control, as well as our local funding. So we have used them. They work in conjunction with our State League of California Cities, with the City Managers Foundation. They work closely on municipal issues, and they have been a great help. And in my report, you'll see there are a number of benefits that we have been able to gain from their representation, and a lot of their benefits have been securing funding for our general fund.
That's a great explanation, I'm persuaded. I think they ought to hire you. Mina, I think they ought to hire you to be their front.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And that's all?
I'm satisfied.
Very good. And since you also called out item L, maybe we can move to that?
Yes, that's kind of complicated. I just wondered if we could have a little more explanation for all these charges and services and so forth.
Okay, so item L is the Safety and Compliance Culture Project. So this is tied in with our workman's compensation or process and the state OSHA health and safety requirements. And so the creation of this and the contract associated with this is geared at supporting our wastewater treatment plant primarily and development of health and safety plans and compliance with state guidelines. Public Works Director Cliff Finley has made it up to the front dais, and I'll have him speak to the item.
Yes, Councilmember Jones. You--
If you would elaborate a little bit on the report here.
Yes, absolutely. I thought you had a specific question. So over the past year, we have hired a consultant to do an audit of the Public Works, primarily the Public Works Department, their safety program. We have a lot of guys working in the field in the Hill Canyon Treatment Plant, and that, they're exposed to risk. Cal OSHA requires us to have a safety program. We have one in place, but it hadn't been audited in many years. So we hired this firm, these experts, to come in and evaluate our program and give us some recommendations. This item on the agenda tonight amends their contract for one additional year to go ahead and help us with the implementation of those recommendations. Does that answer your question?
How many year contract was this originally?
The original contract was for one year. This amendment extends it one additional year for the implementation phase of the project.
So does that charge seem reasonable, then, to you, that they're charging for this extra year?
It does. They actually have a staff person that is working with our staff, part-time, at the MSC in Hill Canyon to put these programs in place, develop the training programs, et cetera. So it's obviously not a full-time job, but they are spending a fair amount of time out there.
Okay, thank you.
And just to sort of close out the comment there, because it's important for the entirety of the council to know, the workplace health and safety component here at Hill Canyon in particular, it's extremely dangerous work at times. Keeping our workman's compensation rates and claims down is incredibly important, not to mention the health and safety of our employees overall. And so maintaining a practice that ensures that is really at the heart of this particular item.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And with that, Mr. Jones, would you like to move approval of items--
Yes. I'll move items F and L for passage right now.
Thank you. Mrs. Rodriguez?
Councilmember Adam. Councilmember Adam, if you could state your vote, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Engler.
Yes.
And Mayor Bilalapena.
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
And now we will go to item 7K for Kevin and Councilmember, I should say, Councilmember McNamie. You said you were going to recuse yourself from that particular item?
Yes, I do. I have a conflict there. I stable my horse there, so I'm going to have to recuse myself on this particular item.
Thank you. Okay, it's a great place to have your horse there. Very good. Then I will look for a motion to approve item 7K.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Adam. Go ahead, please.
Councilmember Adam.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie.
I'm not voting because of--
Oh, sorry. I apologize. Mayor Protem Engler.
Yes.
And Mayor Bilalapena.
Yes.
And that motion carries 4-0 with Councilmember McNamie abstaining, or absent.
Recusing, yep. Thank you so much. So that is our consent calendar. We now go to item 10A, and this is a report by our City Investment Review Committee. It's an annual report, and I believe that this will be first presented by our Finance Director, Mrs. Boscarino, and then we will hear from the Chair of the Committee, Mr. Short. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Bilalapena, Councilmembers. It is my pleasure tonight to present our Chair of the Investment Review Committee, Mr. John Short III, and he will be presenting the Investment Review Committee's annual report. Mr. Short?
Members and staff, this evening will deliver the Investment Review Committee's annual report for 2020. The committee was established in 1997 and is comprised of five members with experience in finance as well as investments. The current members include Jim Hogland, Mark Honke, Richard Law, as well as myself. Jim Hogland's term expires this January, and there is also a vacancy that was created with Linda Cohen's resignation. The council members have made several appointments this evening and will be announced at a later date. The committee was established to monitor the treasurer's compliance with the investment policy and report to the city on a quarterly as well as annual basis. The committee also recommends changes to the investment policy. The committee presented its last annual report at the City Council meeting December 10, 2019. The committee did meet their scheduled four times during this calendar year. The city's portfolio yield decreased 65 basis points from 2% down to 1.35% since our last annual report. A decrease in the yield provided an estimated $1.7 million less in interest income this fiscal year.
Mr. Short, are you there? Was he muted accidentally, perhaps? Then, Mrs. Boscarino, will you be able to continue this report until we hear back from Mr. Short?
Yes, I can continue the report. So in 2020, however, the Fed decreased interest to near zero, and due to the laddered portfolio, the city's yield will follow this trend. The committee's quarterly reviews of the investments show that the investments are a diversified pool of low-risk investments in compliance with the city's policy. The committee submitted a report of its findings to the City Council after each meeting. Agendas and summary notes were also provided to council members and are available on the city's website. The committee is tasked with recommending changes to the investment policy. Staff will present the updated investment policy to City Council in January. The recommendations made by the committee this year are related to the passage of Senate Bill 998, which is effective January 1, 2021. Those policy, or that law includes replacing the outstanding commercial paper limit with a single issuer limit for commercial paper and medium-term notes combined based on the portfolio size, as well as allowing for the purchase of U.S. government securities during times of zero or negative interest rates. And I will be available to address the committee's recommendations for changes to the investment policy when presented to City Council in January. The recommendation is to receive and file the Investment Review Committee's annual report.
Thank you, Mrs. Boscarino. Appreciate that. Are there any questions of Mrs. Boscarino at the moment? I don't see any. None of my colleagues has his hand up, so very good. I will then ask for a vote to receive and file.
Madam Mayor, I'll move that we receive and file the report.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones, please vote.
Councilmember Adam.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Engler.
Yes.
And Mayor Bilalapena.
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. We will now be able to move to our first public hearing, item 8A, and this, I'm opening the hearing now, and this will be presented by Nader Hidari, Mrs. Clerk, Madam Clerk, I should say.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8A regarding solar carport at the Municipal Service Center Project, CI 5265. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Two individuals have presented speaker cards, and pursuant to council standards, each speaker will have five minutes, and the yellow light will display when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. I understand we don't have any speakers for this particular item. Good evening, Mr. Hidari.
Good evening, Mayor Bilalapena and Councilmembers. Nader Hidari, thank you for allowing us to present this project this evening. With me tonight is Dr. Helen Cox, our Sustainability Division Manager. Should we have questions? Just a brief background on the item. In 1993, the Municipal Service Center was constructed, and in 2013, it was expanded. That expansion, it originally envisioned solar carports to be included in the project design, but at that time, due to funding considerations, was not constructed. That was resuscitated in 2017, where the project was bid out with a traditional design-bid-build method with a kind of a complex architectural design, and again, due to funding shortfall, the project did not proceed forward. In 2020, however, we took measures to simplify the project design and apply additional grant funding that we were able to procure. And in addition, we're using a simplified, single-point-of-contact procurement method that's allowed for energy projects in California. So the project site again is at the city's Municipal Service Center in 1993 Rancho Canejo Boulevard, and the portion of the site that we are envisioning for these solar carports is the southern portion of the site, as depicted in this graphic, and in more detail here. They're showing the proposed solar canopies, three total of them, two of them being over the bus parking area, and one of them being over the dioride parking area in the furthest portion south. The associated trenching and some of the other componentry is also shown on this slide. The goal of the project is to generate renewable energy to offset 100% of the energy use of both the MSC facilities and buildings, as well as the CNG fueling station. Here are some just conceptual images of this traditional solar carports. The ones that we will be utilizing on this project will be slightly higher than maybe the normal ones due to the height of the buses. And this is another image showing the smaller carport for the dioride vehicles, which would be a can-lever design. Staff issued the RFP for the project this summer and received five qualified proposals in the fall. Staff evaluated each proposal for numerous factors, including qualifications, design creativity, cost, payback period, project understanding, and experience. In accordance with Government Code 4217-10, site logic was ultimately selected after this review process, based on considerations including experience with this type of project, skills and qualifications of key personnel assigned to the project, proposed schedule, quality and customer service qualification, and best overall value, as the pricing also was on the lower end of the scale. This is the breakdown of the project cost summary, including the proposed action tonight, which is the first item there, the Energy Services Agreement, and some of the associated contingency and city furnished. It should be noted that the grant funding covers a majority of the project costs. 1.2 million of the total project cost is willing to be covered by a grant that we have available. So when you take that, and here's a projected energy bill savings over 25 years down at the bottom there, $3.3 million. And so taking that into consideration, you'll see that the energy bill savings start around $70,000 a year in year one and grow to, you know, close to $200,000 a year at the tail end of the 25-year period. Here's just a high-level breakdown of the proposed project savings and the payback period on the energy output of the system and that 25-year energy savings. This chart reflects both the total project cost in the first, in the second column there, and then on the third column is the net project cost when you back out the $1.2 million grant available to us. So you'll see there, there's a payback period that is pretty attractive for the city funds only, and that payback period may be further reduced to, you know, between three to six years, actually, depending on the amount of contingency that is actually expanded during the construction phase. So again, project benefits and features, renewable energy to offset 100% of the energy use of the facility, simplified procurement method, pretty attractive payback period. All steel panels and inverters will be 100% American-made, and the project will be blended in to match the look of the adjacent buildings. So our schedule is, assuming the project award on this evening, would start design and engineering next month and start construction in the spring, followed by project completion this coming fall. The recommendations are in the staff report, and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hidari. I like that you included that all the materials need to be American-made. Excellent point. Are there any questions of staff? Councilmember McNamie.
Absent the grant, would this have penciled out as far as being a moneymaker or even break-even for the city?
Absent the grant, so if I go back to, there was a, you know, graphic there that depicted both of them. So that has a 16-and-a-half-year payback period. That's a pretty mid-level payback period for a solar project. That's pretty industry standard, so it still would be an attractive project for many agencies, but we have the fortunate ability here to apply the grant and even make it even more attractive for ourselves.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just Madam Mayor, a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Councilmember Protem Engler.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, Mr. Hidari, the project as presented is intended to handle the amount of energy being used at the MSC currently?
That is correct.
Is there any reserve for any other things that may wind up going out there, such as solar power, electric buses, and that sort of thing? Will we have to adjust sometime in the future for that?
Yeah, the size of this project wouldn't be enough to generate the need for the bigger-ticket items, such as, you know, all solar bus fleet in the future. However, you'll see that there's still, I guess, plenty of parking lot left to approach that in the future, should the need arise.
And this is 100%, the contract is for solar generation, electric generation, and there's no storage capacity being put in?
The storage, there will be some storage capacity. I can maybe, potentially, Dr. Helen Cox can address some of the details of the system.
Good evening, Dr. Cox.
Good evening. We did look at storage as a possible option on this, but it actually increased the payback period quite a bit because the main benefit with storage is to reduce your demand charges. But when we looked at that, when we modeled that out, actually, it didn't really benefit us in terms of payback.
Yeah, the incremental increase, it was another, you know, $400,000 or so.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment. We did set a couple of the parks when I was on the park board, Dos Viejos and Borched, and it worked out very nicely, and we had a good positive cash flow as a result. So I'm very much in favor of this.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Is that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion without emotion.
Very good. If there are no further questions or comments, I will call for a vote then. If there are no further questions or comments, I will call for a vote then.
Councilmember Adam.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Engler.
Yes.
Mayor Bill De La Peña.
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
And just for the record, there was no public speakers for this public hearing.
Yes, as I mentioned at the beginning, that when I opened up the public hearing, there are no public comments, and I actually didn't close the public hearing formally, so thank you. But we can now move on to a department report, that is Item 9A, and deals with our young pre-screening process, fairly young, I would imagine. And we welcome, to the other dais, none other than our legendary Community Development Director, Mark Towne.
So before Mark has a chance to speak this evening, I would be remiss if I didn't take an opportunity to share with everyone that tonight, and I'm sure he'll allude to it, is Mark's last presentation with us as the Director of Community Development, as he transitions into retirement at the end of the calendar year. And after nearly 30 years of service with our organization, you mentioned him as legendary, and he indeed is that from all aspects of community planning and design, starting with his time with COSCA. And residents here, we cherish our open space, and in large part, Mark is one of those reasons that that open space is what it is today, and that we have so much of it, and that it is protected in perpetuity. His efforts in that regard are really second to none. His role as Deputy Director of the Department, Community Development Department, where he worked closely with the Planning Commission through many, many years. And then most recently, in the time that him and I have worked most intimately together, is in his role as Director of the Community Development Department, following John Prescott's nearly 40 years of service with the organization. So you see this theme here of that longevity, and I think that speaks to the type of organization that we have and the stability that we've had in this regard. I just wanted to take a moment to, you know, share my thanks and appreciation on behalf of the executive team. We're going to have a little chance to do that virtually with a gathering with him on Friday. But I feel very lucky to have come into the role of City Manager and an opportunity for Mark and I to really grow together in both of these roles. And he's been a partner, and he's had an eye towards the future. And I think one of the biggest thumbprints that he's leaving on our organization is his commitment to structuring the department for the future. Really looking as his, he has some of an academic background, where he's taught for many years in different disciplines. And Mark and I would spend long hours whiteboarding out concepts and ideas and structures to align the department for the future. And one of the biggest positives is that he's leaving us better positioned now from a staffing perspective, as we've had a lot of retirement turnover within that department, positioning us better than we have been in many, many years. And look no further than the two deputies that he brought in, Mr. Kelvin Parker, who's now our Director of Community Development in the audience this evening, and our Deputy Director, Michael Forbes. Both of those gentlemen are top talents, and Mark has had a chance to groom and support them and to try to hand the baton off in a manner that's consistent with what we've seen in this organization through the years. So I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge Mark, to thank him, and we are going to miss him tremendously. But I know on my next surf trip to Costa Rica that I will have a warm place to visit and some good local connections.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. I know this is some, this is an important item we're discussing, but this being Item 9A, this being Mr. Towne's very final presentation, I was just wondering whether other councilmembers wanted to say something as well. And you can just raise your hand, because I can actually see you now. So if you would like to comment, just go ahead and raise your hand. Councilmember Adam, followed by Mayor Protam Engler.
Thank you, Mayor. I was so relieved when John Prescott retired after a stellar career that Mark Towne was going to take over. It was a tremendous appointment for Mark to be our Community Development Director. He's been a very steady hand on the tiller. He has been a very reassuring voice up there at the dais for all of us. He's been a great resource for me. Mark and I go all the way back to my days on the Planning Commission. His knowledge and history of the city is just incredible. And I just can't compliment you enough, Mark, on the great job that you've done and how well you've dealt with all of us. Your relationship with all of us has just been so positive, and we've learned so much from you. And Mark lives right in the heart of Thousand Oaks, so he knows what it is to be a resident of this city. And everything that he's done for this city, I think, reflects that. So I know your retirement is going to be quite exciting, going to Costa Rica and all, so I'm looking forward to having a great retirement, Mark, and thank you for everything you've done for the city and for me personally.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Engler.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Mark, I just wanted to say, I won't be as verbose perhaps as our former mayor, but when I, I'm one of the newer members of the council, and when I came on to the council, what, two years ago now, you were instrumental in getting me up to speed on what was going on in the city, what the thought was behind some of the programs that were being put into place. And you did it in a way that made me come up, well, come up to speed quickly, but also in a way that really engaged me in your thoughts behind community development. And I think it's a credit to you that, on the way out, you have selected two gentlemen to follow you. Kelvin's going to be our Community Development Manager, and then we have Mr. Forbes, Michael Forbes, behind you, standing in the wings. And that's a compliment to you. That's good planning on your part, and I appreciate the state in which you have left the city.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes. Well, I don't quite understand this, Mark. I'm very familiar with two of your predecessors, Phil Gatch and John Prescott, who averaged, like, one was planning director for many years, and then John was, they had together like a 40-some-year tenure. And I don't understand that. How many years have you been planning director or head of the agency now?
I've been with the city almost 30 years, all of that spent in the Community Development Department.
How many years have you been, you're the top person in the Community Development Department?
I've been director for about four-and-a-half years.
Well, don't you think you're leaving a little prematurely, based on the tenure of your predecessors? I mean, I...
It does seem that way at times.
Yes. Well, all kidding aside, I really appreciate the work you've done. And I've known you only for a couple of years. Well, I've met you before and known of you, but we've only been, you know, conversant for a couple of years. So I really thank you for bringing me up to speed and for the very courteous way that you've done, and you've actually asked my, I've had you out to the side of a couple of proposed projects, and you have not shrunk from humoring me and coming out and looking at these things. So you're very accommodating, and I wish you the best of luck. And let's see, you're going to Costa Rica? Is that it?
That's the plan.
Okay, well, best of luck, and I'm sure your Spanish is in good order, so you'll probably fit in very well. Anyway, best wishes and thanks for a job well done. I appreciate it.
That sounded like an exit interview, Mr. Jones.
Whatever.
Now, we also have our news council member, Kevin McNamie, who would like to say a few words. And I hope that if, Mr. McNamie, you haven't had a chance to meet Mr. Towne yet. Hopefully, you will before he leaves. Go ahead.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Mark, I have known from sitting in the audience, watching council meetings take place, as Mark, with his PowerPoint and his easy presentation style, takes the council and the audience through wonderful journeys of what the city direction is going to be. And I so appreciated those presentations, because it made it so clear as to where we are going. I was so looking forward, as a council member, to be on the other side, listening to these presentations. And when it was announced to me not too long ago that Mark was retiring to Paradise, Costa Rica, my first thought was, he didn't check in with me on this one. So Mark, again, the best of wishes to you in Costa Rica. It's one of my fantasy places to go visit. I've heard good things about it. Godspeed, and I hope you too enjoy your time there in Costa Rica. Good luck to you.
Well, thank you all very much for those really kind words. It is a strange feeling to be at the end of one's career.
I think Mayor Bill De La Peña wanted to jump in really quickly.
Yeah, I hadn't jumped in yet, so...
She's not going to be short-changed.
No, but that's okay. If you didn't get me now, if I didn't get you now, I would have done it later. But no, I, of course, you have this institutional knowledge of the city of Thousand Oaks, as your predecessor did as well. But if, for those who don't really know you, I want to say that you are just the kindest, most patient, most diplomatic Community Development Director or person in general. You deeply care about your community. You have always tried to reason with those who did not see necessarily eye-to-eye with you. But boy, you leave some very big shoes to fill, and Kelvin is ready for it. I know he is. He is sitting up there right now. You chose excellent people in succeeding you or to succeed you, and I know that this tradition of preserving what we know is Thousand Oaks will continue. So you have left your thumbprint on everything, on a lot of projects. I will miss you. I will miss you. Go ahead.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much for those words. They mean a lot to me. It's been a great time with the city. I couldn't have chosen a better organization to devote my career to. Started in my early 30s, believe it or not here, and I've thoroughly enjoyed it. When I think back on those years, a few things really, really sort of stand out and that I wanted to give thanks for. One is I wanted to give thanks to all of my coworkers. You, we, the community has an incredibly talented and dedicated cadre of employees, of staff, that devote their daily work to trying to make this community better, day in and day out. And it's been just a pleasure to work with them. I would like to actually thank you, the City Council, and your predecessors. It's been a lot of fun working with you. It's been fun bringing interesting projects. I hope they've been interesting to you for your consideration. And I've always been impressed by the tireless dedication of our city councils. And, you know, you all work seven days a week, basically. And it's, this community's quality of life is in large part thanks to you. And then finally, I wanted to thank the community at large, all of the residents, the volunteers, the nonprofits that have helped to make this community so great. You know, an involved community is a better community. And this is, there's no better place to show that than Thousand Oaks. And then finally, I did want to just thank my family, my wife, Iliana, and my son, Kevin, who have put up with, I don't know how many hundreds of evening meetings like this. And so, really appreciate that. All right, now let's get on to the item at hand. This item is, and hopefully, everybody can see it. It is a sort of a two-parted topic. One is an update of the Community Development Department, as I look back on 2020 and look ahead to 2021. And then the related topic of our pre-screens and the process that we follow as we evaluate them. But as we just mentioned, the Community Development Department has new leadership. Kelvin Parker, who's pictured here, will be succeeding me as Director of the Department. He joined the Department about three years ago. He's been in the role of Deputy Director during that time. During that time, he lays onto our Planning Commission and oversaw all of our daily planning and building functions. When he came to the city, he brought with him over 20 years of planning and development experience. So he has an extensive background, and I know he'll do a great job as my successor. I also wanted to call out Michael Forbes, our Deputy Director. Michael has been, joined us about a year ago, a little bit over, and has been doing a fantastic job with the general plan update and the land management system that we'll talk about momentarily. And then finally, I couldn't be more proud of the entire Community Development Department. Again, very, very dedicated, talented, and very experienced, with a lot of experience from other cities and other sectors. One of the ways that the Department has sort of responded to the pandemic is by reinventing our procedures. And one example is a new virtual counter that was created. Through that virtual counter, we are able to accept our planning applications and payments online, and that included the vital activities of outdoor dining and business expansions. Pictured here is also a document exchange locker system, where applicants can submit paper plans, and we can pick them up without any person-to-person interaction. And then also, we've been conducting counter appointments via Zoom that we would otherwise have been conducting in person. We also have been able to continue all of our public meetings via Zoom format, including Planning Commission, our administrative hearings, General Plan Advisory Committee meetings, to name a few. But I'd also like to just shout out two divisions in Community Development that have really done great work in responding to the pandemic. One is our code compliance team. Code compliance has worked day in and day out to help businesses reopen, to help them respond to county orders. And they have really been sort of the front line in terms of the city's interaction with our business community, and helping them as much as possible to adapt to this new environment. Also, our operations group has done a great job with our CDBG grant applications. We received two of those for COVID-related purposes. The total, approximately $1.1 million. Those have helped small businesses try to survive this storm and have been vital in terms of the city's response. Interestingly, the Community Development Department has continued to experience high activity levels. We actually, in terms of building inspections, are conducting about the same number as last year, over 300 building inspections per week. So that is impressive and a reflection of a lot of homeowner activity, business expansions, accessory dwelling units, things like that. We've also seen a number of planning applications submitted every week. Those have actually been running higher than pre-COVID levels. We've been receiving about 80 applications per month, and previously, it was more in the range of 60. So again, a reflection of a lot of homeowner activity, business expansions, and continuing interest in development. The biotech sector, I think, is worth mentioning. We have, right now, 21 buildings that are in some stage of the planning and development process out in the Rancho Canejo area. A large number of these, we anticipate, will be used for biotech purposes. And so that sector is clearly expanding rapidly, a vital part of our business community. I mentioned before our land management system. This is an entirely new system that's going to allow online applications, electronic plan reviews. So we're going to be working toward a paperless workflow. That system will start in terms of design and implementation next month, and we anticipate that it will go live early in 2022. A special project that will be coming to Planning Commission and yourselves early next year is that of objective design standards. The state is required that we use objective design standards for all of our design review, which, as the quote here indicates, such standards don't involve any personal or subjective judgment. judgment. And if you think of our design standards today, they're a hybrid of objective standards and some subjective standards. Now they have to be all objective, and we will be bringing those to you in February to Planning Commission and March to the City Council. General Plan Update, this, I know you've been involved in and have been monitoring it, but this is one of the most important projects that the city's undertaken from a planning standpoint and from a community standpoint. It's the first comprehensive update, and I'm happy to say that all of the existing conditions reports are done and the first phase of public outreach is done. This is taking place over the past year plus. I just mentioned a few here, or included a few here, in terms of, really, I think, excellent presentations. We had two community forums to discuss topics that were relevant to the general plan update as well as Ms. Tam's presentation on housing in February in these chambers. Currently, our city team, we have a dedicated city team that's working on the general plan update, as well as a team of outside experts. They are both working on land use alternatives as we speak, and those will be before City Council in the first quarter of 2021. The reports that I mentioned and related materials are available at tiox2045.org. As we look forward, basically, we have a number of, it's going to be a busy time. We have a number of important items that are going to be before you and Planning Commission and the State Department of Housing and Community Development. The land use alternatives that I mentioned will be reviewed by the public during January and February of next year. Concurrently, you will most likely be hearing multiple pre-screens. At least, we have several that are already in the wings that would like to come before you, and perhaps others. We anticipate that in April of next year, City Council will be considering the land use alternatives and identifying a preferred alternative. That will be part of what we will send to the State Department of Housing and Community Development next August, next summer. In terms of our draft housing element, the land use alternative is a key part of that to identify how we're going to accommodate housing targets from the state. Moving to 2022, the housing element will, after going back and forth between us and HCD, will go to you as City Council. And then the final housing element will go to HCD in February. And then we anticipate approximately in May of 2022 that the general plan update overall will be considered by yourselves. Okay, so as we look forward, obviously, we have a lot of activity coming before the city. Not only all the items that I just mentioned, but there will be the ongoing stream of legislative items and entitlements, including the ones for recently green-lighted pre-screens. And some of these, especially the ones related to the housing element, have statutory deadlines that we have to meet. As we looked at this as staff, the one area that we thought was most important to review at this time, in terms of ensuring that we can manage all of these projects, is that of our pre-screen process. So what is the pre-screen process? Again, the purpose of it is to decide if a project that is, that requires an allocation of residential units warrants any further consideration. So these are properties that aren't designated for residential uses today, or they may be, but we have to allocate units to them. And when we think about pre-screen, the purpose, there are three primary factors. They propose land use, the requested units, and the community benefits. Just a quick review of the background. Pre-screens are really a type of general plan amendment. They originated in 2016. In order to better understand vertical mixed-use projects on Tio Boulevard, we had never seen that type of a building before. Now that we have two that are under construction, but we had never seen them at this point in time. And so the pre-screen process was invented to better understand them. And to do so, the pre-screen requirements include a conceptual site plan, grading plan, but also elevations, floor plans, even artist renderings to fully understand them. And then in 2018, we revised the process, most importantly, applying it citywide, but also requiring a development agreement as part of the process and other relevant changes. So I mentioned that a pre-screen is really a type of a general plan amendment. All general plan amendments require initiation by City Council. This is an illustration of your more typical general plan amendment initiation, one that would not be asking for an allocation of residential capacity. And in such a scenario, we simply look at the proposed land use. We look at the land uses in the immediate area. We do not require any plans of any kind, and it's a very succinct and brief analysis. It's also relevant to speak briefly to where pre-screens are in the planning process. So what you have before you here is our basic planning process. It is composed of six steps, as you can see, and we're going to focus just for a moment on the first couple. The pre-screen process is the very first step in this planning and development process. And the fundamental question, as I mentioned a moment ago, is whether a concept warrants further consideration or further evaluation. That's all it is. Does this idea even warrant further evaluation? It's not a final approval of any kind. It simply says, yes, this is worth further consideration, or no, it's not. If a project is quote-unquote "green-lighted" to go forward, then it steps into the really important pre-application step, which is the technical review of the draft design. And that's where the design is submitted to city staff, staff from Community Development, Public Works, City Attorney's Office, police, fire, all sit down and they analyze the application and review it in terms of its technical adequacy. And very often, the pre-application submittal changes quite a bit, even between that step and the next, which is the formal application. That's when an applicant has massaged their design, they submit it, and that design is the foundation for everything that happens after it, the environmental review, Planning Commission recommendation, and final action by City Council. So we're talking tonight about the very first step in this process, the conceptual step. So we have a little bit of experience under our belts, so to speak. Over the last three years, we have brought eight pre-screens before yourselves. And just a couple of quick takeaways from this. If you look at the status column, I highlighted in bold the projects that have gone forward. So we have five projects that are moving forward. One is under construction, and we have four others that are in some state of progress, normal progress. But we have three that have not moved forward. One was denied, one expired, one was withdrawn. So point there is simply that, and it's really not surprising, but many of these concepts don't move forward. Some do, but some don't. And these didn't move forward for the first one because City Council denied it, but the other two, for reasons or factors that are outside of city jurisdiction. The other point I wanted to raise here is the far-right column, the affordable units column. In all but the very first pre-screen, each applicant has come before yourselves with some number of affordable units as part of their mix. And that's an important tool now to try to obtain affordable units. Now that we don't have redevelopment agency funds to build affordable housing projects as we used to, this is a primary way that we have been able to try to include affordable units in projects that come before us. Okay, so not only have we gained some experience in that sense, but we've also identified areas for improvement. These are the five most important areas for improvement that I have observed. One is that we often have some confusion regarding the pre-screen rule. Observers think that it's a final approval. It's not. As I said, it's just a question of whether the concept warrants further evaluation. And second is the processing time. Pre-screens take quite a bit of time. The time between submittal and appearing before yourselves is taking about four and a half months, and that does not take into consideration the time that an applicant has to prepare for the pre-screen submittal. So it's a comparatively time-intensive step in the process. We've also observed that applicants may be less flexible down the road if they've devoted a lot of time and energy into a detailed design at the pre-screen stage. The fourth item here, inefficient use of applicant time and staff time. As I just mentioned, several of our pre-screens have not moved forward despite staff spending a lot of time on those. One of those is actually pictured here. This project located at 2219, East Thousand Oaks Boulevard, was approved in terms of moving forward through the process by City Council, but it did not move forward for other reasons, after a significant amount of staff time and effort. And then five, the pre-screen processes begin to sort of deviate from the original intent, which was to review an idea and not a detailed design. There's also a factor here that's relevant, and that is the relationship with the general plan update that I just mentioned. Pre-screens, as I noted, are needed for proposals that are looking to obtain a residential land use. And so as we update the land use map of the general plan and identify properties for potential residential uses in the future, through that process, the relevance of the pre-screen step will begin to diminish over time. And because pre-screens have helped us to secure community benefits, as I mentioned, staff thinks that it's important to try to consider these pending pre-screens that I mentioned before we get too far down the road in terms of revisions to the land use The proposed improvements are actually pretty simple. What staff is suggesting is that as part of the pre-screen, an applicant would submit a project description, which would describe, of course, the proposed land use, the number of units that they're looking for, basic metrics like parking supply and demand, but also importantly, community benefits. What are they proposing to bring to the table in terms of community benefits in exchange for those residential units? The applicant would also be required to submit a conceptual site plan, and that is relevant, and this is an example of one. In this slide is that a site plan tells one where proposed buildings may be located. It identifies ingress and egress. It identifies approximate green space areas. It helps one to understand the relationship between the proposed concept and adjacent properties. And so we think that a site plan is relevant still. And if the property had a lot of topography, then a grading plan concept would be included as well. Now, if City Council were to approve that pre-screen based on that information, then the applicant would submit building elevations, floor plans, and all the related material that is part of a detailed design concept that is really most appropriately part of that, of that pre-application step that I mentioned earlier. So that would still be submitted. There's no change in what is being required. It's simply a change in when that information is required. The benefits of this approach, should City Council choose to adopt it, I think it would add clarity to the pre-screen process. I think it would retain flexibility for staff, for yourselves, as these ideas go forward because they often change, they may never even go forward. It's a much more efficient use of staff time. And as I mentioned, next year and the year after, Community Development will be in front of you on a regular basis. There's just going to be a lot of activity, a lot of projects, a lot of actions. And it would, as I mentioned, enable a timely consideration of the pending pre-screens. If the process is simplified in terms of asking for the site plan and grading plan at the pre-screen and the other more detailed information as part of the pre-application, it will enable you to consider those pending pre-screens early part of next year before you begin to get into the general plan land use map. And then finally, it realigns the process with the original intent, going all the way back to 2016. If we look at, we're nearing the end here, so please bear with me. If we look at a comparison of what sort of the landscape would look like in the future without pre-screens and with pre-screens today, there are, again, clear benefits to using a pre-screen process in some slightly modified form. With pre-screens, staff are able to negotiate community benefits for the projects through the required development agreement, including affordable housing. A pre-screen ensures that you have both early and final review of that project. And then finally, it maximizes your control over the project and the process. Going forward, as some of the properties are designated for residential uses, through the general plan update process and the land use map revisions, then that ability to negotiate community benefits will begin to wane. Affordable housing will be based entirely on objective-defined formulas such as density bonus and state law. And City Council review, in fact, would only occur on appeal. It wouldn't occur in any other way because it would already have the appropriate land use and zoning. And then obviously, less control. So in terms of concluding my presentation, the Community Development Department has been very active during the pandemic, and we expect that activity level to continue next year and, in fact, the year beyond. The proposed re-sequencing of pre-screen submittals would address the shortcomings that I mentioned and enable you to consider these pending pre-screens early part of next year. And then based on those two statements, staff, of course, recommends that you consider and adopt the draft resolution in your packet that would adopt the proposed changes to the city's pre-screen process. And of course, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Town. My colleagues, if you have a question, just raise your hand. Councilmember McNamie.
Mike, just to, or I'm sorry, Mark, just to, well, and clarify. I remember this coming into effect simply because builders would spend hundreds of thousands of dollars developing a project to present to the council, only to have it turned down because it was completely off the mark of what council wanted. So it gave the builder a sort of direction as to what council wants. Is that a fair statement of one of the advantages of pre-screening?
That is.
Now, is there a situation here where council approves a pre-screen, and then what I'm hearing from you goes off to fire, police, and any other agency that needs to review it? Is the next time, of what I'm hearing from you, the next time we will see this project is when it's before council? Is there any other times that council will get a look at this just to perhaps raise a red flag that this isn't going to make it even at the very end?
No, there would not. Once a project starts down the formal application sort of path, it goes through a full environmental analysis. It is vetted by our Planning Commission. We receive public input on both the environmental documents and the project as it goes to the Planning Commission. And so the City Council sees it at the very end of that process. And at that time, it is within your purview to approve or disapprove the proposal.
So just to reiterate for the public listening in, this is just a direction, concept, design that's being presented to the city and council consideration at the pre-screen. So the builder doesn't burn up a lot of time, money, and energy, as well as city time, money, and energy to move a project forward that is going to get denied because it wasn't originally the design intent of the council. Is that correct?
The pre-screen step really, I think the best way to think of it is whether the project merits further consideration. That's really the fundamental question. We want to know a little bit about the project to answer that question, but a pre-screen green light does not denote final approval of the project. You're right in that applicants, I think, appreciate council's early input. You're right in that applicants, I think, appreciate council's early input, but at the end of the day, the, the approval or disapproval is up to city council. So.
And maybe if I'll add to that, Councilmember McNamie, one of the aspects of this, as you, you have been watching from a distance here, you've seen a number of these, and as they've evolved over time, you articulated the reason for the process very well. I think one of the resulting impacts is that we have seen developers actually rendering a project too far and coming too far down, resulting in rigidity in, in their process as they move forward to working with staff, and that creates complications. Mark, maybe you can speak to that a little bit?
Now, Mr. Powers makes a, a good point, and that is that even with the additional information that staff has requested through the, through the pre-screen process, to be candid, we never envisioned that, that the plans would become so detailed. One of our recent pre-screens, the, the submittal package was almost 40 pages of sheets of, of plans and design information. That's the kind of information that we normally see at the pre-application or at the, at the formal application stage, not at the pre-screen. So it's, it's gone way beyond even what, what staff anticipated and has become sort of hyper-detailed. And that, that, as Mr. Powers mentioned, has a number of, of negative side effects.
And if I could add, if I could add one more, one more thing is that when, you know, when we work with applicants, obviously, an applicant wants as much information as possible. They want as much, almost predetermination. So it's a delicate balance between providing feedback and providing yes, no decisions on a project at such an early stage. It's a very delicate balance in doing that. So on the one hand, as Mr. Town characterized it, does it warrant further consideration? That's significant feedback to an applicant, but having it go so far as to, you know, design characteristics is, is too far down the process at such an early stage.
Thank you, Mr. Town.
Council Mayor Protem Engler, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a, and I appreciate the segue, Ms. Noonan. My question really revolved around twofold. In your experience, Mr. Town, have you, have you found that some developers have found that our pre-screen makes them less inclined to work with staff? And then, and then secondarily, you met, Ms. Noonan mentioned that fine line between providing guidance and not being rigid in our approach at a pre-screen. Can you give some examples where you think that a, a council could give guidance but not provide such, such guidance that it almost ties staff's hands?
The, well, first of all, I think it is fair to say that, that applicants are less inclined to modify a design after they have expended the kind of, the resources and time to develop the detailed designs that are being submitted. Those, the, the packets that I mentioned, you cannot create that package of, of design sheets without a team of, you know, composed of an architect, at least, an engineer, landscape architect, planners, attorneys, managers, maybe even others, traffic consultants. It, it takes a lot of energy and a lot of, of time and money to create that kind of a set of, of documents. And, and so once an applicant has expended that time and, and resources, they're clearly less inclined to change that, that design going forward, which is, which is not always in the city's best interest, because designs evolve, and they, they always evolve through that planning process I outlined earlier. So in terms of this fine line, to me, the, again, the three key considerations in a pre-screen is the proposed land use. Is the proposed land use appropriate for the site, given its, its environs and the site itself? Two is whether the requested number of units are, are appropriate. So remember that we have a limited number of measur-y residential units under our growth control measure. We have a limited pool, and though, city does not sell those, those units, those are available on a first-come, first-served basis. And so the question of how many units are being asked compared to how many are still available, and then that segues into the third variable that's really important, is that of community benefit. So that's, that's important, because, again, we don't sell these units. These units have value, and what does the city get, get in exchange for these units? It's community benefit. That could be affordable units, it could be parkland, it could be a contribution to offset infrastructure that's not part of the actual project. There's a number of different ways that community benefit can be, can be provided. So in terms of input, high-level, general input in terms of you need to provide additional community benefits, or you, we think your proposal in terms of benefits is appropriate, the number of units is appropriate or not. And, and then very high-level thoughts in terms of, of the site plan, but not too much, because this will be coming back to you later, and it's certainly going to change. The designs always change as, as they wind their way through that planning process. So hopefully that answers, answers your question.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Town.
All right. And how about my other two colleagues? Any questions?
I have a question, and it's.
Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, I, it's just that for openers, does this matter come to us? Was this initiated through our planning department for the benefit of the city, or was this initiated by the suggestion of developers?
No, this, this came about from staff. It was part of a number of changes to the downtown specific plan in 2016. Remember, the, the downtown specific plan was adopted in 2011, and so we learned through the first five years, and we had a package of changes. But it came from staff in terms, and, and city council had input, I mean, the, the original idea, we talked with city council about, obviously, but it was designed to better understand mixed-use projects, and that was, that was the catalyst for it.
Mark, I think he's asking as well about this particular set of modifications, recommendations to pre-screen that originated.
Oh, I'm sorry. This particular set of, of changes is from staff.
But it, we believe that it would not only be beneficial to the city, but to, for post-developers as well. Is that right?
It, it would be primarily beneficial to the city, because I think that it would enable us to maintain the, the maximum amount of control over these, these pre-screen projects. That translates into community benefit. That, to me, is the most important factor here, the most important benefit. To a developer, it, it would be beneficial in terms of a more abbreviated submittal upfront, but if a project is approved to go through the process, then applicant, like I said before, they're, they're submitting the same documents just one step later. So that cost that I mentioned before, that time, it's going to be invested if the project goes forward. It's just invested at the next step and not at the pre-screen step.
Okay. I also have a couple of questions from a resident who will not be able to participate. And if you, if I may, and the first question was, is it still possible for the council, and I believe I know the answer to this, to deny high density? I think they're specifically referring to the Hampshire 325 Hampshire Road project. In other words, is it possible for the city to deny a high-density quarter-twenty unit, unit mixed-use project if it meets all other guidelines?
Well, again, this, the property at, at 325 Hampshire, it is not residential today. Its land use is commercial today. And so the pre-screen that was most recently considered by city council was a request to change that from a commercial land use to a residential land use. That is, that is a legislative act that is entirely within the purview of city council. And to answer the question specifically, yes, city council can deny a project there. It's not obligated to approve it. The pre-screen action, as I said before, allows that project to go through the process, but doesn't guarantee final approval. That, that is, we're so early in the process, we don't even have a formal application yet. And once we do, then we go through the environmental and planning commission, public input, and then finally, the project comes to you, comes to city council. So the short answer is yes, the project can be denied, but I anticipate that, that, like other projects, it'll, it'll evolve as it goes, as it goes forward.
And I presume it can also be modified.
Absolutely.
It's not 300 or 400 units or nothing. We could, we could modify that.
I think it's best to characterize, you know, pre-screens in that regard as a ceiling, meaning it's a not-to-exceed number of the maximum that could be on a site. In general, you know, I think our, our findings are, in most expertise, that grading and other challenges result in a reduction of units often.
Okay. And I'll, I'll hurry through this. I don't want to detain or prolong this, you know, for not a good reason. But the second, second question was, could you please explain for the public, who writes the development agreement discussed in the staff report, and why it's not available for review until the project is approved? Is there any fallacy in that premise, or what is your reaction to that?
Thank you. A development agreement is required if a project goes through the pre-screen process. And an applicant, you know, insofar as, as that's required, an applicant completes a development agreement application, they pay a fee for staff's time review that. And then that, that development application, or development agreement application, once it's submitted, then it is reviewed by staff. Staff meets with the applicant, negotiates the specific terms of the development agreement, both in terms of, of specifics regarding the project for the, for the applicant's benefit, and also those elements that benefit the community at large. That development agreement is part of the package that goes forward. We identify the main points of the development agreement by the time it gets to planning commission, and then we bring the final draft to city council as part of, of the final review. So the development application is submitted as part of the formal application, and then the terms are negotiated. City attorney's office is directly involved. And again, by the planning commission, we, we know the terms. Those are, those are basically worked out, and then we have the final draft as part of what goes to the city council.
And is that development agreement then capable of modification? Or is it, you know, is it part of the package, and it has to be either approved or denied without modification?
So in the past, the past one that was done at 229, right? The last development.
299.
I'm sorry, 299. I keep confusing 219 and 299. On 299, what happened on that one was a development agreement was negotiated with the developer, and the city attorney's office and community development department participated in those negotiations. The deal points was presented to the planning commission and to the city council, and as is common, like, for example, when we do affordable housing agreements, typically what happens, and we do other contracts this way, typically what happens is the Ts and the Is have not been crossed at the point that it goes to the city council, and there might be additional comments or additional requests from the city council. So typically what happens is council will delegate the authority to the city manager for final execution of the development agreement. However, the, the main deal points are presented to both the planning commission and the city council.
And can the council give any direction at that point to the city manager as far as the, their feelings, or their desires about the development agreement?
Yes, because, for example, you're going to have all of the deal points in front of you. So for example, let's assume you're considering, again, the entire project and the deal points to a development agreement. If council wanted to add more of something or add a new provision, they have the authority during the city council meeting to ask that that be included in the development agreement as well.
So we do have some discretion at that point, then, as I understand it?
Yes.
All right.
Just like you do with, just like you do with any contract.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Jones, any other questions? None. I do have a question before we go to our two public speakers regarding this item. Mr. Town, in reviewing the resolutions that from, are from both 2018 and then what is proposed tonight, there, the only difference that I see is they both do contain still the connectivity with Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and also what is being removed tonight is the specific, specific, specificity. Thank you. Specificity about the design and architectural quality. So what other differences are you proposing, is staff proposing tonight, between the resolutions from 2018 and tonight?
That is the only change. It's changing the section that previously was titled architectural design, and it's now site plan concept. We will be changing the submittal requirements, which are part of the, the pre-screen application accordingly, if council supports this proposal. But the other elements are all, all intact. I don't recall any changes to, to any of the other sections. So the other evaluation criteria are still relevant.
Now, as we're developing our general plan update, we do have different sites, opportunity sites for additional housing, and this particular resolution is specific to Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Why would it not be more generalized to include future housing in future opportunity sites?
This is for the entire, will be for the entirety of the city, because some of these projects would be outside of that, correct, Mr. Town?
The resolution states Thousand Oaks Boulevard.
Correct.
He's got to move over to his resolution book.
It's the second to last page of the resolution. Does the project create a quality, well-connected pedestrian-oriented environment along Thousand Oaks Boulevard?
Yeah, that only pertains if it's within the SP 20. In other words, the T.O. Boulevard specific plan. That factor would be considered only if, for projects that are on the Boulevard in the specific plan, but all the other factors would be applied for any other application.
Okay. Is that clear in this resolution, that it is community-wide? I'm not sure if it is, which is why I'm asking.
Right. So what it says is, in addition to the factors identified in sections four, A through D above, the following criteria are applicable to projects within the specific plan area. So what that means is, it's basically an additional factor, additional criteria for the, for the T.O. Boulevard specific plan area, whereas everything else is citywide.
Okay. My next question is, we used to do these applications, pre-applications, or when it came before the council, through general plan or zone amendment or initiation, and this is how we handled all of the applications in, in the city prior to coming up with a pre-screen concept. I know you had a couple of slides that spoke to that, but why couldn't we go back to what we used to do?
I, I think that the difference between the traditional general plan amendment, and I will go back to it very quickly here. There it is. So a typical general plan amendment initiation. So a typical general plan amendment initiation is very simple. It is looking at a change from, say, institutional to commercial or industrial to institutional. It, it's not, it does not involve a residential proposal. It's non-residential by definition. No plans are required, and the analysis is only a couple of, literally a couple of pages. I, I think the overarching difference between this process and the pre-screen process is that the pre-screen process is allocating a limited number of residential units under measure E. That's, that's the big difference. And as I mentioned, we, you know, the city doesn't put those on the market, we don't sell them. So it's not just a question of land use change, it's a question of community benefit. What is the community receiving in exchange for those units? And that is unique to the pre-screen sort of class of general plan amendments out there. Because you are, you have to make that decision. If you're talking about institutional to industrial or commercial to industrial, that's not part of the equation at all. So that was the reason why we started the pre-screen process to begin with. And, and I think that the, the approach that staff is recommending tonight, I think it strikes that balance between providing enough information so that city council can make an informed decision with regard to the allocation of those units. But it doesn't go so far as to blur the boundaries between, you know, a pre-screen and a formal application. It, it strikes that, that delicate balance between the two.
Thank you. And the question that was also slid to that about the development agreement, when does city staff begin the process of developing a, or creating a development agreement?
We would actually begin that conversation at the pre-application stage. Could even talk about it at the pre-screen. But the, those are all preliminary discussions. The, the formal application requires the submission of, of a development agreement application. And that application itself requires the applicant to describe what they are going to provide the, the community. And so we do have preliminary discussions with the applicant before that. And, and so.
And I think, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump in on your mark, but I think one of the key components of that is that projects often aren't deemed as viable, meaning they're actually going to move forward, until they really emerge out of the pre-app process. And usually if, if a fatal flaw in a project is going to develop, as such as what we've seen in 2219, for example, fatal fall regarding fire access on the parcel. They worked and worked, tried to resolve it, unable to resolve it. So discussions prior to that in depth on a development agreement are usually not the best use of staff time, because if a project is going to make it, it has to get through that hurdle first.
Thank you. So the pre-screening was not intended to be as detailed as it was at the last time that we had a pre-screening back in, I want to say, maybe it was March or, or April, I can't remember when we had, the 325 Hampshire Road. And so I know there was some reference in staff report that it might have confused people that this was initial approval of the project. But I'm wondering whether it was really the applicant was confused about what to do for the pre-screening, because they offered us such detailed plans, when in fact, that wasn't really the intent, and we've never had really such detailed plans before. And given that the pre-screening gives the impression that once we approve this, little, very little changes, not sure what will come out of the 325 project. But certainly, there has to be flexibility, because that is what expected of the applicant, whether it's the 325 or any future applicants. So I just want to be clear that, yes, the initial pre-screen is not a, an approval of the project. But when there is very little wiggle room from an applicant willing to make any changes, then in essence, the pre-screen, basically what was presented or is being presented then, in the end, is the final project. It's perhaps more of a statement, but.
No, and I, and I would, I would concur with that statement, that to have a highly detailed pre-screen upfront tends to limit flexibility going forward. And so the proposal tonight to have an applicant submit a site plan, maybe a grading plan if relevant, but keep the information only as much as is needed to make that threshold decision of whether it warrants further consideration. That's the goal. And then let the process, the pre-app, the formal app, the environmental analysis, all of those steps, even planning commission and city council, I've seen projects over the years that have changed significantly based on input from, from yourselves, commission, through the SEQA analysis. So spending too much time upfront on a hyper-detailed design can, can sometimes be counterproductive, and it's certainly contrary to their, to the original intent.
And regardless of what the city council decides to do tonight, I want to make sure that past applications are not being given a, a pass, so to speak, because of any action that we may take tonight, that they will still be held to that standard, that a pre-screening is a pre-screening, and that changes will be expected?
It does not affect prior pre-screens. Every pre-screen by definition is a, is a, is an action to allow a project to go forward through the normal process or not. And so those are subject to the same rules.
Thank you. All right, I think, oh, now we have council member Adam, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council's been very clear over the years in their interest in affordable or entry-level housing with any project that might happen to come along, which is obviously a community benefit. Mark, could you explain how the realignment of the pre-screen process that you're suggesting tonight could give us the potential for more affordable housing on any given project than the way we are approaching it currently?
Well, I, I think that if an applicant only submits the, the proposed requirements that I, I just outlined, and with their project description, they will identify what the community benefits are, if it's affordable units, they will say so. Some applicants will come before you, as you've seen, and they will, they'll say, we are going to provide 20 affordable units, or 30 or 40. But some may not. Some, some may come before you and say, look, we, we would like to provide affordable units as part of this project. We don't have the exact level, income level yet, the exact number, but, but we would, we would like to provide those. I think if we have a simpler, more conceptual process upfront, it gives you more, as the city council, more latitude, more ability to say, we think that your affordable component is appropriate. We think, you know, you should enhance it. We think instead of moderate income, you should have a mix of very low income and lower income. These are workforce individuals that are, you know, working full-time and a part of our community. So I, I think having a, a simpler process as proposed gives you more flexibility to, to provide that input. And an applicant that hasn't already determined, oh, we're going to have, you know, X number of three-bedroom units and Y number of two-bedroom units, they have, they're going even more receptive, I think, to your, to your input.
And wouldn't it also give staff a little more flexibility and a little more negotiability with a project, especially in the pre-screen and the formal application? If they, if during the pre-screen, the applicant hadn't, in a sense, boxed themselves in with a certain number of units?
Yes, that, that's the case. It would give us more flexibility to use the next step in the process, the pre-application, as, as, as that is appropriate, most appropriately used, to take the technical review at that point and, and not in, not at the pre-screen.
So to, to sum up then, a, a more simplified pre-screen process would give not only the city council, but staff, a better flexibility and more negotiability with the project to potentially come up with more affordable units than what we're looking at in the current process.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have two public speakers. First one is Andrew Pletcher, followed by Roseanne Witt. I hope they're still with us.
Still, still here, Madam Mayor.
Very good. There you are, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Are you at your favorite place?
I, I am at my, at my, my small business, yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor. And to the city attorney, I hope she'll indulge me, I'm going to go off track just for a moment, and thank Mark Towne for his years of service as a, as a resident of Newbury Park, as a small business owner, as a former planning commissioner. I had the ability to work with Mark on a number of projects, some even discussed tonight. And just want to thank him, congratulations, sir. And I wish you, wish you all the best in the next stage. And I know Kelvin will be a great addition to his new role. Moving on to the comments here tonight, I'm here tonight to certainly lend my support for the resolution before you. Generally, I support the proposed resolution as it will help streamline the development process in the city, most notably for a number of projects that are currently in the development pipeline. Certainly, as noted in the staff report, the resolution will provide clarification regarding the pre-screen process and bring it in line with its original intent to focus on project concepts rather than ultimate design, which comes after the developers work with city staff and come before the planning commission with a more finalized design. Moreover, the resolution before you increases, increases the efficiency in the development process. To date, the timeline, as noted in, in the presentation, is four and a half months between pre-screen submission to hearing and six months between the pre-screen application being submitted, followed by the former, formal application at a later date. This resolution will decrease that timeline for projects, save developers money, and utilize staff time along the, along the way. Moreover, this resolution before you, as somebody who works in a neighboring jurisdiction and oversees development process, you know, we should be applauding the city manager and city staff for taking this initiative and having a willingness to make important changes to our process and procedures without losing the important considerations that Thousand Oaks residents hold so dear. Finally, the resolution before you tonight will just increase the efficiency within city staff with the changes that are required to go before a pre-screen public hearing. Again, as somebody who works in a neighboring jurisdiction, the time and amount of energy and work and effort that goes to a public hearing on the staff level will be, can be better spent elsewhere. And it's, will be good to see that process becoming more efficient. Finally, I just want to conclude by emphasizing that the pre-screen process works. The city's gained affordable housing units and other community benefits through this process and has seen five of projects, projects approved, and has seen the projects that don't quite meet the level of our standards sent back for further review and consideration. So thank you, Madam Mayor, and, and council members for the time.
Thank you very much. We now move to Roseanne Witt, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor De La Peña and council members. My name is Roseanne Witt. I was recently selected as a member of our city's Climate and Environmental Action Plan Stakeholders Group. And I have been asked to speak here on behalf of the Canejo Climate Coalition, a group of interested stakeholders and Canejo Valley residents, many of whom are watching tonight's proceedings with great interest. I would like to address the council in regards to the pre-screen process for general plan amendments. As you may know, Ventura County's average temperature has already increased 4.7 degrees Fahrenheit, 2.6 degrees centigrade, since 1895, making hours the fastest warming county in the lower 48. That average is projected to climb three to five degrees more here in Thousand Oaks over the next 20 years, which is within the scope of our general plan, and which translates to an expected 27 extra days per year of 90-plus degree heat and a 700% increase in days topping 100 degrees. So ambitious greenhouse gas emission reductions need to be a conscious consideration of every planning or design decision made in our city. From now until our general plan is approved, every opportunity to go beyond Title 24 Energy Efficiency Building Codes should be considered integral to general planned amendment requests and must be included among any pre-screening criteria for all construction projects. Policies requiring building codes stricter than those of the state, such as the one recently adopted by Ventura County prohibiting gas connections in new residential and commercial construction, should be immediately considered and implemented. A clear plurality of residents, 38%, responding to the city's CAPP survey question about establishing such reach codes agreed that doing so was extremely important. Transportation at 50% of total city emissions is TO's greatest challenge in reducing our greenhouse gas pollution, an effort which will require very creative solutions from our leadership. After transportation, buildings account for our second-largest source of emissions at approximately 35% of city totals, according to figures presented during the GPAC meeting on sustainability. Given that sustainability has been identified as our city's guiding principle number five and as a top 10 council priority, and that buildings likely account for more than a third of our city's total emissions, we must be alert to every opportunity for decarbonization in new building construction. As such, our coalition would be interested in seeing an actual accounting of greenhouse gases associated with buildings in our city and an identified goal for reduction of building-related emissions that would inform every project review.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Mr. Towne, anything that you would address specifically about what was mentioned tonight? I found the presentation regarding greenhouse gas emissions intriguing.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, so did I. And two thoughts I'd like to offer in response. One is that greenhouse gases and climate change is a key part of our general plan update. So that is a topic that is, that is being discussed, as the commenter mentioned in her presentation. It was discussed at our General Plan Advisory Committee Meeting on Sustainability a couple of months ago. And the general plan is a perfect mechanism to deal with that, because as was just mentioned, greenhouse gases are a function in, in large part due to building design and due to transportation. And both of those are going to be addressed through the general plan update. I should also mention that, and this goes back to the draft resolution that we talked about a few minutes ago. If we go to the same second to last page, under section D called Community Benefits, we have, and we have had in the past, one criterion, the question, will the developer commit to designing and constructing new buildings to exceed green building standards? So that is part of the pre-screen process. As well as the final catch-all is the developer proposing other similar benefits to the community. So I would suggest that, that that is already part of the pre-screen process, and it certainly is part of the general plan update process, so the comments are well taken.
And I might add to that, just a couple of things. One, it benefit, that's a point of why a comprehensive general plan update is so important, because you take all elements in concert together. As Mark mentioned in the pre-screen, and just to remind the city council, the Kmart pre-screen hearing did involve discussion around this in that I, I believe that the applicant, at least at that time, was contemplating lead certification, at least on some of their, some of their building structures. So the idea of sustainability and building architecture is a, is a common component. I think that was part of the discussion on the Pine Crest property earlier as well.
Thank you. And Mr. Towne, will any sort of application plans?
And Mr. Towne, will any sort of application plans be seen or reviewed by our sustainability department at all? Or is, how would that work?
Well, we have a, yes, short answer is yes. Long answer is that we have a really strong sustainability division in Public Works, and they're doing great work. And that ties in directly to what we're talking about tonight and the general plan update. And so I would say yes, getting, continuing to have their involvement on these topics of building design and building efficiency is, is a, is a perfect match.
Thank you. Very good. So now we are at the end of this department report, number 9A. Are there any comments, questions before I ask for a motion? Please raise your hand, my colleagues, council colleagues, since I can see you now on the Zoom gallery. All right. So there are no comments or questions. I am looking for a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes. Subject to the 9A matter, I move that the subject resolution be introduced, for the reading be waived, and it be adopted.
Thank you. And that would be items, recommendations, one through five, I believe. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, that was the other one. Very good. So yes, whatever you said goes. All right. So we have a motion before us. Any, any comments or questions to the motion? None, then I will call for a vote.
Councilmember Adam.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Angler.
Yes.
Mayor Bill De La Peña.
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. We now move to item number 13, and this is to be presented by our city manager, Mr. Powers.
Yes, thanks, Mayor Bill De La Peña. Our next regularly scheduled City Council meeting is set for the 12th of January. And at that meeting right now, while the agenda is still taking shape, we are tentatively planning on a, another public hearing on our, one of our favorite topics, the Leaf Dispensary. They have a, yet another new location that they are contemplating and needs some potential action by the City Council there. We have a public hearing on, on-street parking, oversized vehicle parking, or an ordinance amendment that is being contemplated for that night. And we have a department report following on the item that we just, just had some conversation about, our Climate and Environmental Action Plan, Emissions and Engagement Plan, that will be presented by Dr. Cox and our Sustainability Unit. Would like to just take a moment to wish everyone a wonderful holiday season with your family. And just take another moment to thank the City Council. This has been quite a year as we close out the business here. From staff's perspective, we're so appreciative of your flexibility, your, your nimbleness, and as we've worked our way through continuing the business of the people through these meetings, and very happy to say that we've been able to do it fairly flawlessly as we've moved through the year, and not without challenges behind the scenes. But I'm thankful for the City Council and their commitment to safety and managing these meetings virtually. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. I would like to adjourn the meeting this evening in memory of Leon Stevens, Leon Dean Stevens. Tonight's meeting, as I said, will be adjourned in his memory. He was 84 years, 84 years old. Leon passed away November 9th. Leon's generous dedication to the young and old of our community was demonstrated by the immeasurable hours he spent as a crossing guard, helping kids get to school, as a dial-a-ride dispatcher, assisting seniors, getting them to the places they needed to go, and as a Meals on Wheels driver, keeping our older residents safe and nourished. Leon was an employee of Bank of America for 30 years, and he retired in 1991 as a vice president in LA. And during his active retirement, Leon became an employee of the City of Thousand Oaks as a crossing guard stationed at Weathersfield Elementary School. He started and ended each school day with a smile and a fist bump with all the students he protected. Simultaneously, he volunteered for senior concerns and provided support at the Global Senior Center. He truly loved volunteering and helping others. His compassion and smiles were a gift he eloquently shared with those around him. He was married to Connie, had two beautiful children and a granddaughter, and he was very proud of the accomplishments of his family. Leon enjoyed speaking with every person he came across each day. His energy for people and his appreciation for their friendship put a smile on our faces and in our hearts. We mourn Leon's passing, and we extend our sincere condolences to his family and his many friends. Leon will be missed. And with this adjournment, I want to thank the citizens of Thousand Oaks for helping us get through a very difficult 2020. It's been a tough year. 2021 hopefully will be a better year. I count on my colleagues to assist us in our efforts in fighting the pandemic. Our hospitals, as we stated at the beginning of this meeting, are near capacity. People are dying. Yes, they have comorbidities, but nonetheless, they're dying. And they're becoming younger as well. So we enjoy our freedom. We enjoy our liberty. And for those who want to express their views, please do so by doing social distancing, physical distancing, washing your hands, and wearing a mask. Wearing a mask is not much to ask of someone. So in order to avoid a complete breakdown, breakdown of our healthcare system in the Ventura County healthcare system and all of Southern California, really, we need to count on you to do what's right. Political differences aside, just do what's right. I thank you all very much. I thank city staff very much. I thank my colleagues very much. Former Mayor Al Adam, who led us through this whole year with sage advice. Mayor Protem Bob Angler, Councilmember Jones, our baby now on the council, Kevin McNamie, a fresh council member, Drew Powers, Ingrid Hardy, Tracy Noonan, Police Chief Freihoff here, there are many staff members here. You work, you're, you're, you, you work so hard and you're so passionate about our city. We appreciate it very much. I know the citizens appreciate it very much. So please don't make it hard on everybody else. We cannot break down in terms of our healthcare system here. Do what's right. And with that, I wish you a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, a very Happy New Year, hopefully a Happy New Year. And we will see you on January 12th. Good night.